Thank you. It's never really the same.
Right.
Councilmember Morell, are you ready to reestablish the quorum?
No, just let them vote in.
Oh, vote in?
Mm-hmm.
So you don't call any of them?
No.
We're now going to go to the bottom of page 25. "We have a legislative group and motion line over M. 25530 by councilmembers Morell and Harris, directing the City Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to ordinance number 4,0264, MCS, as amended, the comprehensive zoning ordinance to amend Article 19 to establish a new interim zoning district to be named a transient lodging interim zoning district, the intent of which is to require the approval of a conditional use by ordinance for the following uses when they are designated as permitted uses. In the text of the comprehensive zoning ordinance, hotel motel, hostels, short-term rental, commercial timeshare, bed and breakfast, principal and accessory, the transient lodging uses shall be subject to all provisions in the CZO related to conditional uses, included but not limited to Section 4.3. All other regulations in the CZO that may relate to any of the transient lodging uses, including but not limited to U standards, bulk and yard standards, parking requirements, and stormwater management, shall continue to apply the uses if approved under the terms of this IZD unless expressly waived by the ordinance approving the conditional use. Where any of the transient lodging uses are prohibited in the CZO, they shall remain prohibited uses under this IZD." We have an amendment. Amendment to motion M. 25530 by councilmembers Morell and Harris. Amendment to M. 25530 to add additional review standards for appeals to codify review criteria for conditional uses considered under this interim zoning district to make technical corrections and otherwise to provide with respect there too. That is the amendment.
I'll move on the amendment. Can I get second? Second by councilmember King. Please vote your machines. Six yays, seven yays, no nays. Amendment's adopted. We have several speakers on this item. Mr. Gary Keane and Ms. Kimberly Keane.
Thank you all. I just wanted to request that the City Planning Commission provide the transient lodging study for a review prior to the public meeting. Otherwise, informed discussion is impossible for the citizens of New Orleans. This issue is of critical importance to maintaining the neighborhoods for New Orleanians that live and vote here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kimberly Keane?
Hello, I support the establishment of the new IZD, but I'm asking that the council help close the loopholes, starting with defining short-term rentals as anything more, less than 90 days, because currently they're able to do that at 30 days, and we're seeing really abuse. There's no regulation, the city's not getting any money when they do 30 days. So if you would make short-term rentals, 90 days, anything less than 90 days. Also establish permits for anyone that's utilizing short-term rentals. Establish limits and fees to reduce the footprint of STRs that will keep the neighborhoods more livable. And then also establish penalties that are significant and enforce them to the full extent of the law. I would also like to recommend that you don't mix short-term rentals with also long-term residents. It doesn't make it safe for long-term residents to be in a building where your next-door neighbor could be a short-term rental. And I also support having this study before we go to public comments. It's hard to make comments on something you haven't read. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Burnside, followed by, uh... Go ahead. Followed by, I believe this is Nadia Jenkins-France? Okay, after Mr. Burnside.
So transient lodging is very interesting to me for a lot of reasons. I've spent most of my life in a transient state. Sometimes those transient states have lasted a couple of years, but nonetheless, moving from here to there. And as a child, I also experienced some transient. As a young person, my family moved from West Virginia to the great state of Idaho. And in the process, we spent three months in a campground in Boise, Idaho, which is the state capital, in a travel trailer. As my family decided where to buy property, we ended about 60 miles up the interstate at Mountain Home. So it's interesting and important to me to involve campgrounds. We have one that claims to be the French Quarter Campground, where they have very expensive motorhomes parked there, a quarter million dollars each. There are other campgrounds in the area. Homeless shelters are transient lodging, and I've been homeless, and I avoided shelters for lots of reasons, not the least of which were the inhabitants thereof, both human and non-human. Homeless shelters have a bad habit of having bedbugs, among other things. But they are definitely transit shelters for people in need or desire. Churches, once upon a time, offered transient housing. There were monasteries and nunries, some of which were not transient. People lived in them all their lives, but some of them were transient in that people were on pilgrimages or otherwise moving from point A to point B. So I view transient as important and good. I liked the stories of the cowboys, and they were definitely transient. I wasn't always a fan of the farmer who stayed in one place. So I would suggest that transientism is good, and that the city should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. France, followed by Lyle Montgomery.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having this hearing regarding the motion on the transient study, transient lodging study. I believe that the first time I spoke in front of the city council was in the July general meeting, and it was precipitated with the 1201 canal being on the news, and the request for permit by the developer was denied. We stood here with residents of 1201 Canal to support the motion. So I am bringing two requests to the city council and to transition it to the City Planning Commission, as well as a recommendation to bring attention to the definition of short-term rentals. This term only covers, at present, for the majority of the city, is under 30 days rentals. And we know some very creative developers who are using 30 days as basically unregulated short-term rentals, and it affects the numbers of our community, those who own and pay taxes in the city of New Orleans. And also, it's affect, distorted the economic situation with the housing market. So I'm asking the city council to bring attention to the fact that 30 days plus to 90 days rentals be considered as part of permitted uses. And appreciate all of you. I sent emails to four members of the city council.
Thank you. Lyle Montgomery, followed by Susan Johnson.
Hello, I'm Lyle Montgomery. I live at 625 South Rochelle Blave. I'm not paid to be here. I'm opposed to the establishment of a new IZD requiring conditional use for transient lodging uses. This matter has lingered since 2023, and the residents of New Orleans deserve a final definitive solution that doesn't introduce additional bureaucracy, cost, time, and potential unfairness. My neighborhood in particular has been devastated by the development of CSTRs. I have repeatedly complained about what was happening to my city councillor, to the safety and permits, to the STR administration, to the mayor, repeatedly, all for the past four years. I'm still waiting for a solution. The, um... Let's see, the CSTR ordinances have not addressed density at all, and because of this, they have essentially destroyed my own particular neighborhood. I live in a neighborhood abounded by Perdido, Dorjeanois, Tulane Avenue, and Galvez. It's a mixed-juice neighborhood, mostly residential, and the density, when it was measured, the density of CSTR occupants is 51 and a half occupants per square block, which is huge. The existing damage to my neighborhood has been dramatic and devastating. I urge the city council to simply rescind the 2016 CSTR ordinance and subsequent amendments, and then wait for the transient lodging study report recommendations, and then take definitive, thoughtful, and final action on this matter. Thank you.
Hello, Susan Johnson, 2822 LaPage Street. I'm not paid to be here. Town of Carrollton Watch, historic New Orleans neighborhoods. I am here with the other neighborhood advocates to ask you to delay implementation of this well-intended legislation. We need, please, to hear first the results of the transient lodging study, which will be announced on October 28th, and also looking for more data from our good friends at DSP. So just to emphasize that support for, um, support for this effort against short-term rentals is broad-based in the city. So I'm checking in from town of Carrollton. Thank you.
Eleanor Graham, followed by Monique Blossom.
Good afternoon. I'm Eleanor Graham. I represent hundreds of neighbors through the Neighborhood Association, Neighbors First for Bywater. I represent dozens of citizens in the Saxony condominiums located at 900 Bartholomew Street in Bywater. And I'm also here to report that my fellow neighborhood leaders and marionettes who cannot be here are greatly discouraged and cannot support this proposed ordinance. I am not paid to be here. I am here also, in part, presumably, because I have strong background as a former deputy city attorney and assistant city attorney for the city of New Orleans in land use and zoning specialization. I can tell you this is a problematic legislation, and I would love to support it. I can't, because it is legally without significant appropriate foundation, and is probably, in my view, untenable. Additionally, I believe it improperly uses the IZD interim zoning district and conditional use processes to essentially provide a short-term Band-Aid where we need a more permanent solution after the receipt of the transient lodging study and have a public airing with the appropriate recommendations from CPC. One, why is it legally untenable? Well, when the current IZD expires, folks, there's nothing horrible happening. The sky isn't falling. The fact that there could be a flood of applications doesn't mean that the public welfare is imminently implicated. In fact, applications themselves don't shoot. They don't cause environmental damage, and they certainly don't harm property. What happens is, you just have an expiration. There's a period of time for thoughtful consideration and an opportunity. Which opportunity? This is it. What are we lacking? You're lacking data from the Department of Safety and Permits. You're lacking data about the numbers of applications that currently exist. You don't have any data, nor do you know how many applications will be received. You don't have any data on the cost and the efficacy of the current enforcement and administrative mechanisms in safety and permits. And you certainly don't have the benefit of the land use study by the transient lodging study third-party contractor with City Planning Commission. Therefore, you do not have an adequate foundation for the proposed ordinance legally, in my view. Additionally, the IZD process is improperly extended citywide. It should be specific in accordance with the commercial zoning ordinance for districts. And finally, you are not addressing...
Thank you. Next up, we have Monique Blossom, followed by Angela Ozerok.
Good afternoon. Monique Blossom, Louisiana Fair Housing Action Center, 1340, 1340 Poydrus, Suite 710. It's been a minute since I told you my address. First of all, I'd just like to uplift the concerns of the impacted residents that have to deal with commercial short-term rentals in their areas other day, every day. At the same time, I am here in support of this IZD, because it is much better than the alternative of opening up commercial short-term rental permitting and seeing an influx like we saw in District B a couple of years ago. However, I do remain concerned that approval of conditional uses will be vested with the land, and ask that the council take that decision very seriously. I wanted to thank councilmember Morell and Ms. Zuckerman for taking time to discuss, and also for taking amendments that addressed our concerns. And then lastly, the IZD asks the City Planning Commission to consider if a commercial short-term rental will prevent the development of long-term housing or reduce the amount of long-term housing. And if, for me, if it looks like long-term housing, it talks like long-term housing, it is. You know, if there's a bedroom, there's a toilet, there's a kitchen, it meets the minimum health and safety standards, that is long-term housing that the residents of New Orleans desperately need. Thanks.
Thank you. Angela Ozerok, followed by Matt Ryan.
Hi, everyone. Angela Ozerok here with Jane Place. I appreciate the intention of this, and I'm glad that some tool is being thought of. I appreciate it more with the amendments. At the same time, I'm extremely disappointed that we came to a place where this is the only tool, when it's two years ago that the council ordered the CPC to do this study. The study was going to be available to us in June, then July, then August. Now it's the end of October, and we don't have it. This doesn't inspire confidence in the community at all. I know many of us who participated in the study also are concerned about the massive amount of short-term rental owners who participated in the study by a greater factor than the people who are affected by short-term rentals. What I think is important to highlight is that New Orleanians have asked for, by the hundreds they came to council, asking for one per residential square, and I think per Lyle's comments, per Eleanor's comments, we have a lot of neighborhoods, to borrow Monique's idiom there, that look like a residential neighborhood, walk like a residential neighborhood. They are residential neighborhoods functionally, but their zoning happens to be mixed-use on certain streets or commercial in certain streets, and it means that people are living with hundreds of short-term rental guests with no staff above them, below them, next to them, on both sides. And it's come to the point where, in functionally residential neighborhoods, there is just no place for these CSTRs, and the city has proven through DSP and enforcement that it is unable to manage them, and thus it is not fair to continue this window of uncertainty. and thus it is not fair to continue this window of uncertainty when people are surrounded by hundreds and hundreds of guests every night. So I wish I could be more supportive of this measure. I understand that we're at a point where it feels like the only measure, but I think the situation that brought us here was entirely avoidable, and it delays and denies the justice that people are looking for in their neighborhoods, where, like Lyle said, we've been identifying super-dense blocks at Jane Place. There are over twenty blocks in the city where there are more than fifty short-term rental guests sleeping on a functionally residential
Thank you, Angela. Matt Ryan, followed by Aaron Holmes.
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Ryan at ten seventeen U Terp. I support this for the lack of a better alternative, but I would urge the city to revisit that court case from over five years ago, that when we were basing short-term rentals on homestead exemptions. Because homestead exemptions matter. Where you live matters. If y'all don't if y'all claim, if you live in Mery and say that you want to be a city council person, they won't let you do it because you don't live in the right place. So why can the federal court say it's interstate commerce that you can't get a better deal on your taxes and have a right and privilege like being a city council member or renting out your home on a short-term basis? So, and they shouldn't, those people in California shouldn't have more rights than a city council person. And it affects affordable housing because right now prices, rents are coming, there are a lot of people there to leave in the city, so rents should be going down, but they're not because all the short-term rentals are taking up all the rentals. So rents are still high. And if y'all do decide to revisit that, you could say that their ruling caused chaos because we've been doing nothing but managing chaos since y'all weren't allowed to attach it to a homestead exemption. So that's what I think should happen. But thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Erin Holmes, representing V C Pora at eight sixteen North Rampart Street. I am also here to offer some begrudging support of the motion. And I do want to thank Councilmember Morell and his staff for their efforts to address a situation that is kind of barreling down on us and for also making some amendments and working with the advocates to find a good solution. So I, like my colleagues, are disappointed that we kind of have to kick the can down the road again, but we fully understand that this measure is a necessary step to safeguard our neighborhoods. Like many of these advocates here, we desire a long-term solution, a permanent one that does not place undue burden on city departments, especially when they're facing significant budget deficits, and also communities that have to stay vigilant and active, often as volunteers. Conditional uses do just that. An alternative would be to just acknowledge this whole experiment as a failed one and just eliminate short-term rentals together. I've been doing this for ten years. So that, I understand that until that final step, this legislation will serve as a temporary but necessary alternative. Finally, we ask that we move quickly with the transient lodging study to provide effective regulations that protect New Orleans neighborhoods and want to stress that we need housing, not more places for people to sleep when they come to visit.
Thank you. Do you have any online comments? Okay, real fast, I do want to say one thing. I know they're looking at me sideways from the right when I say one thing. I want to express the council is as frustrated as you are on the lack of a transient lodging study that's been timely produced for everyone to comment on. I can tell you that when Councilmember Harris and I asked for a transient lodging study two years ago, we thought this would be resolved by now. I will say two things. One is, there is a double-edged sword to having city planning commissions where members are appointed for nine-year terms. And that is because they may lack our sense of urgency to meet things on a timeline that is timely. And we, as a council, are united in continuing to strongly encourage the City Planning Commission to publicize the third-party transient lodging study, to move forward with their staff providing recommendations, and to move forward on the process. So your frustration with the lack of a transient lodging study that can be produced where you could actually see what the recommendations are and make comments on it and work with CPC on a final piece of legislation, that is exactly what the council wants as well as soon as possible. You have anything to add?
I do, yeah. I just want to add also, I realize this is a legal point, but I think it's an important one. Department of Safety and Permits takes the position that a commercial short-term rental is a vested right. And for lawyers out there, you know what that means, but for non-lawyers, it means it creates a property right that cannot be taken away from you absent serious issues. So I hear and understand, like, well, you can just grant permits. No, it is like you are granting people property rights now, and then you cannot pull those back very easily. So I feel zero compunction about voting for this I Z D when the whole issue here is we're trying to protect the public from making sure there isn't a run in the bank, and we're waiting for our transient lodging study to come, given, and I don't know if their interpretation will survive a test in a rule of law, but that's where we are right now. And given what the interpretation that we're giving to us is, I do not feel comfortable doing anything other than what councilmembers Morell and Harris are bringing today. Thank you.
Let me explain that in non-lawyer speak. The point being that there was some commentary made today of, well, don't do this, and it'll force CPC to produce a transient lodging study, don't have an interim step. The reason why this was suggested is because according to our safety and permits, if you are qualified to have a commercial short-term rental under the law and you pull a permit for it, it's yours. And to Councilman Druzo's point, the last time we had a lapse, there was a run on the bank, and a whole lot of CSTRs were created that are now vested rights that we will have to have litigation to take away. I appreciate you have a different legal opinion, but that's your different legal opinion. I'm sure you can sue the city like everybody else is suing the city. But the point is, is that rather than risk that this is viewed as the safer option, as I said previously, we are as frustrated when Councilmember Harris and I, two years ago, asked for a transient lodging study, we did not think it would take two years to get the study publicly available. We thought by this point we'd be passing a law. And it's very frustrating, and what I would encourage all of you to do, watching the millions watching in TV land, the City Planning Commission, all of their members' emails are on the website. Email all of them and ask them, why hasn't your staff published the transient lodging study? Why hasn't your staff made it publicly available for comment? Why are we still waiting two years? Because from what we understand, the study is done. So contact the City Planning Commission, contact its staff, they are the ones sitting on the study. All right, with that, I will move
Wait, wait, wait. Let me just add this. It's not only, it's not only two years that we've been waiting, but it's two years that we, as the city council, have had to evaluate special exceptions, create rules around special exceptions, consider conditional uses, reject conditional uses. All of this has an impact on our time and our staff's time and other policy decisions that we could be making. So I hear your frustration. I hear all of the frustration. I think that CPC needs to release it, even if it's in draft form, so that you all can take a look at it. And this is on the news, so they can hear me say, go ahead, release the report, so you can comment on it, be ready to comment on it, and then we can take action on it.
Thank you. I'll move.
I do want to say this, as a former member, I have my button pressed, as a former member of the City Planning Commission, I just want to make it clear that the members of the City Planning Commission can go to staff and ask for just that without any hesitation. And I'm encouraging them to simply do so. You've heard the frustrations on this end. I think that we need to get to the resolution of that matter. But it's also important to recognize there's a reason that we presented this option to the City Planning Commission, because we trust you all to do the study and make the decisions that need to be made. Let's get it done.
All right. I'll move like the fiftieth time. Can I get a second? All right, all in favor? Seven yes, no nays. It is approved. Mr. King, you have something?
Yes, at this time, I want to call up the owners of Plume Restaurant. They recently, they recently refined a large amount of money that they feel was unjust. And I would like to have them come up and explain their story and how important their restaurant is to the Algiers community, to the city as a whole. Want to have y'all come up at the desk? The big seat. There you go. Just start by introducing yourself, give us your name, location of your restaurant, and basically give us a story of how you got started and what's happening to you two now, and as a result, what are your options?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time today and taking time away from your agenda. My name is Tyler Stewart. This is my wife, Merritt. We own a Indian restaurant in Algiers. We opened our doors in July of 2020, right in the middle of a pandemic. Ten months later, we became first-time parents. Since then, we've weathered Hurricane Ida, we've lost every employee to larger restaurants, and spent the past several years running Plume by ourselves. Merritt and I work doubles every single day. It's very hard. Despite it all, we've maintained the only five-star rating in Resy for five years, not Emeralds, not Pesh, but a small, tiny Indian restaurant in Algiers. We don't pay for that advertising, and we're not trying to gloat here. We just want to let you guys know that we poured our hearts into this city and into our food, but lately it's been really hard to feel that love in return. Over the past few years, we've faced challenge after challenge over incompetent, flawed systems and procedures. Last year, we faced a $10,000 water bill for a toilet leak that nobody caught. Our neighbor continues to repeatedly threaten us over parking spot, once even pointing a gun at us. That went to court, and we were offered zero protection. We've been charged thousands of dollars in back property taxes dating from before we owned the building, with interest still accruing as we speak, and we can't get any help from City Hall. But we are here today because of recent fines from the ABO Board, this time for missing a liquor permit renewal notice despite our state license being current and all of our sales tax paid on time. Per our hearing yesterday, we only owe $3,600 to move forward with our liquor permitting. Not that much, right? But we already paid $2,500 in permits and fees, and again, we missed one single email. And they've asked for nearly $10,000 collectively in fines. We do not have that. That is not fair. We have only profited $7,000 in liquor sales last year, $7,000. We are extremely small. We don't make much of a profit. In fact, we've never turned a profit. Each year, we close for a month to travel to India for research and development, ship our kit up north, we're not from here, and then travel to India through various regions to discover new food to bring back here to share with our guests. What other restaurant shuts down for a month for research and development? What we are asking here today is small businesses need fairness and guidance instead of punishment for small businesses like ours and those that will come after us. Please consider reforming how fines and fees are handled, eliminate unnecessary penalties, or at least scale them to a business's actual revenue. City administrators should be helping small businesses, should help them navigate the system, not make it harder for them to survive. We love this city, we have given it everything we have, and it has taken everything we've had. No matter what happens here today or tomorrow, this will be our last full year of operating in this city. And we just ask that we do not get robbed on our way out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I just want to give some context now, open the floor to my colleagues. You two are truly a mom-and-pop restaurant. You live across the street from the restaurant with your son. He attends the nursery next door. I remember when you all purchased the building, you expanded it, so the money you did make, you put it right back into the community, right back into the building. It is on Tesh Street in Algiers. Some people say Tesh, younger folks say Tesh, but it's in a neighborhood that has not seen much economic development in a long time. And you all took your risk when no one else is willing to. And as a result of missing an email, you're being punished. I'm going to choose my words carefully. You're being punished by the city. And it's small businesses like you that make this city what it is. And I I'm sorry that you all are going through this. And I'll pass, open the floor to any other comments. See, Councilmember Moreno has a request, followed by Councilmember Morell.
Thank you so much for coming before us and telling your story. We've been talking to Councilmember King about what's been happening with Plume, and really collectively, we've just been discussing how unfortunately, your story is not unique, that so often, it just seems that when small businesses are, you know, having issues, need to troubleshoot some things, that immediately what they're getting from the city is a very punitive response. And ultimately, you know, instead of trying to help you all resolve this situation, you were just hit with fines and closed doors and lack of assistance, instead of really having a level of concierge service to try to help you get out of this situation and feel supported by your city, because we want you here, because we want you here. Small businesses are really the backbone of the city of New Orleans. And so please know that through my administration, that is my commitment to change that dynamic. When there are issues, you missed an email, well, let us figure out a way for you to rectify that situation. Because the other thing that we're seeing as well is that there are some bad actors, some bad actors that just kind of skate through, and we see very little happening with some of the bad actors, yet those who are really working hard to try to do the right thing, and maybe something slipped up, maybe they made a little mistake, they are just getting hit so hard. And that is no way to assist and help small businesses, and that's actually one of the reasons why we keep losing some of our small businesses to other parishes. And so I'm so sorry for all that you have gone through, and if there's any way that I can coordinate and help Councilmember King in assisting you, you have my full support and backing.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Morell? When I was talking to Councilmember King last night about getting this item on the agenda today, a couple of things came on. The first that I asked Councilmember King was, what else is there besides this fine? Like, did they not do this, not do that? He goes, no, it's just this fine. It's just this. Because what I find staggering is that, in all the ways that matter, the city's gotten all of its revenue out of your restaurant. Like, your sales tax gets remitted. The city is making a profit by you being in existence. This is not a situation where you didn't remit your your permit timely and they caught you serving underage actors. This is literally an administrative error. And in most other parishes and most other cities, because you have no history of these problems, there would be a token fine saying, do better. And the fact that you've done everything properly, you've remitted your sales tax, you've done everything else, and the city has made profit off you, we are supposed to be a partner in keeping you open. And what is we are supposed to be a partner in keeping you open. And what is very frustrating in this moment is that, as you said, you've given up everything to this city. And rather than trying to meet you halfway, they're just trying to take more out of your pocket. And it's not right. It's wrong. It's not humane. The frustration you feel is the same frustration a lot of businesses feel in that you have streets that don't work. You had a bad water bill, which was a bad, 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 yes, bad, bad water bill. So like, you guys have put up with all the growing pains of trying to get the city right, and then on top of that, you get smacked with this. I've been working with Councilmember King to see what can be done, both publicly and privately, to see if we can figure a way out because we don't want you to leave. You are the exact kind of people who are pioneers in a culinary industry that we need here because you inspire other young people to take risks. I say that being 47, that's, we're getting old. Though, you're older, you're older than me. But, though, but, but we need to help you make this whole, and we're going to figure this out because we don't need people like you to give up on this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any more comments?
It would be great if that fine could be waived.
So I'll, any other comments from the desk? I, I'll close it out by saying, by saying this, um, this is not, you, you all aren't on magazine. You're not on St. Charles or Canal Street. You're, you're on a small street in Algiers. If, there's no other stores, no other restaurants knocking on the door to move in where you all are. So if you leave, what you hope you don't do, you're going to have an empty building, an empty house across the street. Going to lose three residents, you two and your child. The community will ultimately suffer because it's going to be empty buildings where there once were residents, house, um, people living in the house and a restaurant, a thriving restaurant. You are local favorites. People love the restaurant. Um, they can say five stars online, the only restaurant in the city that has this. And the city's reputation will continue to take a hit because we don't know how to treat our small businesses. And I was recently asked, how are we going to lure large businesses and help our economy? And my response was, if we can't take care of our small, local businesses, then how can we attract and keep big businesses? So I hope that the ABO Board members are listening. I hope that Safety and Permits, they are listening as well and take a deep look at what's being done, not to just you two, but to small businesses around this city and really, really reconsider what's being done. Thank you all for your time. Um, any other comments? Councilmember Morell, the meeting is, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. The board is clear, so I'll move that we adjourn. First reads, oh, man.
Can we get a second on first reads, please? All right, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor?
Ordinance on first read. Ordinance count to 35,276 by Councilmember Green by request. An ordinance to approve and authorize the City of New Orleans by and through the New Orleans Aviation Board to enter into a lease agreement at the Louis Armstrong New Orleans International Airport with S and M Collision Center LLC and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,277 by Councilmember Jeruso. An ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit the retailer of packaged alcohol beverages in an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district on square 2458 La A in the 2nd Municipal District bounded by Haggen Street, Mo Street, and Tulu Street. Municipal address 501 through 519 Haggen Street and otherwise supervisor respects thereto zoning dock at 4625. Ordinance count to 35,278 by Councilmember King. An ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a reception facility with an outdoor live entertainment secondary use in an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district on square 86. Lots 20 through 23 in the 5th Municipal District bounded by Powder Street, Alex Street, Booney Street, and Eliza Street. Municipal address 530 Powder Street and otherwise supervisor respects thereto zoning dock at 4725. Ordinance count to 35,279 by Councilmembers King and Thomas. An ordinance to amend and re-adjourn Article 7, Section 78.2, Table 7-1 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Ordinance number 4264 MCS has amended by ordinance number 2641 MCS and subsequent amendments to permit both established single-family dwellings and home-based childcare centers in the GPD General Plan Development District to support the operational needs of existing residents and enhance access to essential childcare services in the community and otherwise supervisor respects thereto zoning dock at 4825. Ordinance count to 35,280 by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and Grounds Crunola for the public purpose of providing recycling programs through the 2026 carnival season in the City of New Orleans to extend the term thereof for an additional 12 months as more fully detailed in the CEA and, and the amendment number one to the CEA attached here to its exhibit eight and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,281 by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a subrecipient agreement between the City of New Orleans and the New Orleans Regional Business Park with a term greater than one year for the public purpose of providing capital improvements for economic developments to the Enterprise Center site at 13801 Old Gentilly Road, New Orleans, Louisiana 70129. As more fully detailed in the subrecipient agreement form attached here to its exhibit eight and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to number 35,282 by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans, State of Louisiana, Department of Public Safety and Corrections, Public Safety Services, Office of State Police Crime Laboratory relative to providing two DNA and analysts processing centers, processing crimes in the New Orleans area. Desire to modify the provisions of the CEA one year as more fully set forth in amendment number one form attached here to its exhibit eight and may part hereof and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,283 by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the State of Louisiana Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for NOPD to work the pro, to work the program with drug, with drug enforcement and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,284 by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and University Medical Center Management Corporation relative to the public purpose of reducing community violence by supporting a hospital violence intervention program that provides intervention services to patients at the trauma center who have been shot as a result of gun violence. Desire to modify the provisions of the CEA and extend the term thereof for an additional one year as more fully set forth in amendment number one form attached here to its exhibit eight may part hereof and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,285 by Councilmembers Morell and King. An ordinance to amend Section 70-415.342 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to adjust the compensation of the Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee to include representation from a community land trust organization and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,286 by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and Ernest Morell, New Orleans Exhibition Hall Authority, River District Neighborhood Investors in the RDNI Bachelor LLC for a term greater than one year for the public purpose of funding roadway and right-of-way infrastructure improvements within the River District and reallocating an equivalent amount to support the development of affordable and workforce housing, including the Ravina Apartments and an alternate qualified housing project as more fully detailed in the cooperative endeavor agreement form attached here to its exhibit eight and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,287 by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to amend and re-adjourn ordinance number 30,141 MCS entitled and ordinance providing a capital budget for the year 2025 to effect the following change to the 2025 capital budget to deappropriate funds from the Chief Administrative Office, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Polkways, the Department of Property Management, the New Orleans Police Department, the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission, the Office of Resilience and Sustainability, the New Orleans Fire Department to appropriate funds to the Chief Administrative Office and the Department of Public Works and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,288 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend, ordinance 30,139 MCS as amended in title. An ordinance providing operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year 2025 to adjust appropriations to reflect the revised 2025 revenue forecast adopted by the Revenue Estimating Conference on August 27, 2025 and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,289 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend, ordinance 30,140 MCS as amended in title. An ordinance providing operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year 2025 to adjust appropriations to reflect the revised 2025 revenue forecast adopted by the Revenue Estimating Con, Conference on August 27, 2025 and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,290 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend, ordinance 30,139 MCS as amended in title. An ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year 2025 to appropriate additional grant funds to the hazard mitigation for personnel services and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,291 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend, ordinance 30,140 MCS as amended in title. An ordinance providing operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year 2025 to appropriate additional grant funds to hazard mitigation for personnel expenses and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,292 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend, ordinance number 30,139 MCS as amended in title. An ordinance providing operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year 2025 to appropriate additional funds to the Health Department and the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission for operational expenses and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,293 by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend, ordinance 30,140 MCS as amended in title. An ordinance providing operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year 2025 to appropriate additional funds to the Health Department and the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission for operational expenses and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Ordinance count to 35,294 by Councilmember Morell by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and PBP LLC represented by Rasha Drakovich President relative to add certain terms and conditions to an agreement for continuity of services and wrap of final production of the episodes that include cases captured prior to termination of the agreement. This extension is not intended to renew the agreement for the capture of any new cases. Desire to modify the provisions of the CEA or extend the term thereof for an additional one year from the effective date through November 6, 2025 as more fully set forth in amendment number one form attached here to its exhibit eight and may part hereof and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. This is all matters on first reads.
Moved by Moreno, seconded by myself. All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. We're adjourned.